...the Prairie City Council will now come to order December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six oh three P. M. Ms. Bynum, would you certify the form? And I note for the record that we have, uh, city attorney Sarah Griffin on speaker of conference call, ladies.
Councilmember Ro- Rowland.
What did I say?
Councilmember Randall.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Wallace.
President.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, if we can have someone who would like to lead us in a short prayer to open the meeting? You volunteers? Not all of you, yes, ma'am, please.
Helen, by the head, please. In heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to do government business today. We ask that you bless the leadership and those attendants, that we will be doing your will as we go forth, and that we have travel and grace as we return back to our destinations. Remember this about us, not about our beliefs, blessings. We ask in the name of Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. And please let the record show that Councilman Williams, uh, all of them, and now our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doctor Vina Brown, citizen of Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna say good evening to the mayor, city council members, and everybody here.
Good evening.
It's a wonderful evening. I want to, first of all, thank you all for those of you who have participated in the first annual Business Social sponsored by the EDC over the weekend. It was a wonderful event, very successful. We got things rolling for this upcoming year. If you did not get a copy of our promotional magazine, please see before you read, so I can put one in your hand. And then, on another note, I'm saying this now that all of the city councilmen and the mayor and everybody's here. And I'm saying this because it has come to my attention in more than one occasion, and I'm not talking specifically to anybody in here, but I just want to make you aware that it's very important, and it's very crucial, that when we make decisions about housing or doing street improvements, or whether or not we're going to rezonate a particular area, it's very important that we be aware of not to allow our preconceived prejudices or our preconceived preferences shade and color our decisions. Whether it's male or female, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, poor, middle-class, wealthy, regardless of who it is, we should think about that person, the needs of the city, and make fair judgments. It bothers me that I've heard people in our community make derogatory statements about certain classes of people, certain colors of people. And I'm just asking you, when you make your decisions, to erase all your preconceived prejudice. We all, as human beings, have preferences. I might like red, and you might like green. But when it comes to making decisions about housing, manufactured homes, tiny homes, any other kind of homes, it's important that we deal with it fairly. Don't use, "What she said, they didn't like that." If you need to, look at some statistical data, do a survey, be objective. And so, like I said, that's very important, that we deal fairly with people. And you're looking at me like I'm crazy, but what I've heard, some of the things that have been said, I've heard. Not somebody told me. I've heard people say things that were very inappropriate, and I hope those things are not getting into the ears of our councilman, our mayor, our planning and zoning, our EDC, anybody that's charged with being fair and making fair decisions across the board that affect people. People can't help it if they're poor. Most of us sitting here grew up with a silver spoon in our mouth or a bronze spoon, even if it's a plastic spoon. Some people didn't have a spoon at all. So I want us to step out of our personal comfort zone and think about how our decisions affect a right, a right of human beings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I ask, I have a question for the attorney.
Sure. Uh, can you hear me, Councilwoman Griffin?
Yes.
All right. Hey, how you doing, Attorney Griffin? My question is, um, I, for items number three and four, I asked to discuss and take action. Um, is there possible that I can amend, ask for the agenda to be amended? Being that we passed it, saying discuss, consider and take action as a council?
Well, it's not some one time action you want to take, but it may be appropriate as opposed to.
Okay. No problem.
Okay.
But I just, at this point, wouldn't change that, in other words, but depending on what time I do to make something through.
Okay.
Item one, discuss and take action on establishing an African-American Cultural Heritage Commission, ordinance two zero one nine dash one two one six dash zero zero one, in the city of Prairie View. Ms. DeBose and Ms. Stafford, would you come forward? And I understand you've been working on this with our city attorney, um, since the last meeting and what have you?
Yes.
Uh, council, anything you want to share? Or you just want the ladies to start speaking on?
Uh, no, uh, just that I'm very excited, and I think you'll like what they have to present.
Okay.
Go.
Councilmember Jones, have it.
Go.
All right. So we're not gonna be before you long. Uh, we were, uh, here last week to present the overview of the establishment of the African-American Cultural Heritage Commission. You have before you, uh, council, the revised documents that establish the ordinance in its present form, as well as an exhibit, Exhibit A is attached as well. And, um, we have been working very hard on this to craft the language exactly how it would, uh, read for the Prairie, uh, city of Prairie Charter. And, um, you know, we're very excited about this opportunity and, uh, hope that you've given it your full consideration and, uh, want to note that this is a, you know, dynamic commission in the sense that as needs of the community and the city change, things could change, you know, accordingly. So keep that in mind.
And, um, I, I don't have a whole lot further to add, other than I just want to, again, reiterate, um, our support from the Historic Black Towns and Settlements Alliance, that we are very much so in favor of the establishment of this African-American Cultural Heritage Commission, which is really to promote the protection of African-American cultural and historical resources, uh, within the city of Prairie View. This would be, um, the first in state, um, and so Prairie View will, it's kind of a historic moment, um, for Prairie View for this to happen. Um, and we're hoping that once this gets established, it will set a chain reaction off that others would follow suit, um, to make sure that this happens. And so, um, mayor and city council, um, we would appreciate your vote today in favor of establishing this commission. Thank you.
I move that ordinance number two zero one nine dash one two one six dash zero zero one, and ordinance of the city council of Prairie View, Texas, establishing an African-American Cultural Heritage Commission, providing for the composition, appointment, term, and duties of the commission, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing the savings clause, providing the severability clause, and providing an effective date. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that the ordinance be, we have a motion on the floor, councilor.
You can't put your.
I would, I wish y'all would read.
We can say that in the unreadiness. Lee, I said, no, we go ahead, proceed, Mr. Mayor.
My whole point is, if you read Robert's Rules of Order, the chair has every right every other member has, except he only votes, or she, in case of a tie. If you're gonna call something, councilman, you're gonna be eleven years, and you still don't know?
That's a question.
Yeah.
It's a motion.
Okay. There's unreadiness, go ahead.
Uh, I haven't read it.
Councilman Jones?
Attorney Griffin, um, I don't think we, we, we should really get to a battle of who makes the, the motion and.
Agree.
And second, at this point, which this would be a good item, um, and this is a part of history, um, I think council is all on the board, but if we set this precedent now and then moving forward, this is something that could happen. So could you please state for clarity, um, whether or not the mayor could, could make a motion?
Well, I have not studied your city charter on that particular point. Um, as it is not allowing me to, you would be able to, but you would not be settled to vote upon the matter.
Unless there's a tie.
Unless there's a tie. So, uh, you know, I really don't have an opinion on that, not having just presented the question prior to the meeting.
All right. Uh, my question for you, Mr. Mayor, uh, then how we, uh, move forward at every other city council meeting before this city council meeting, uh, until we get that clarification, can a city council member make that motion, so that way we can move in the way that we've moved previously and the way we've always moved our agenda along? Do you have issue with that, Mr. Mayor?
I do. Uh, as council said, unless our charter, which it doesn't, and our city ordinances, which they do not.
It says that.
They say, "Let me finish, council, I don't interrupt you. We have to, like you said, we want to respect each other here." When you, when you say, "Because we haven't done," this came up before, and none of you evidently went back and read how it was supposed to happen. And in relinquishing for the concerned argument's sake, if you all aren't gonna read, because our ordinances do entail adding Robert's Rules of Order, and that is how we are to function as a governing body. And if that's what it says, and as council said, if it doesn't rule out the chair making a motion, what's the problem? If it's not something that you want, you voted down, but you got a proper motion that's been seconded on the floor. And I don't, no more than I want to relinquish you of your ability and your rights as a councilman, why would you want to relinquish mine as mayor?
Listen, ma'am.
It says, "Hold on, let me read it for you."
That's not Robert's Rules of Order.
The chair has the same right to vote as everyone else, but Robert's Rules likes to conchere the chair to convey neutrality to the members, so that no member feels slighted or has any reason and such and such. But the right to vote is there per parliamentary procedure, and I'm not gonna relinquish mine unless you all want me to infringe on yours.
Yes.
I mean, the right to vote is not there. It, it specifically get it in your charter.
Right.
The right to make a motion incites this charter.
Exactly, which means we follow Robert's Rules. Go ahead, Councilman Randall. I mean, Rowland.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Is this on the unreadiness?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
For you to make that motion, um, just puts us in an awkward situation.
Why?
Because I'm just trying to figure out, why would you just let us proceed as we want, as we've always done, uh, but you wanted to just be on this motion to cause confusion? My unreadiness is a real unreadiness to talk to the two. I talked to the attorney, and she said that she had worked with you on the document. Um, my issues were in reference to Article Two, um, Section A, Number Two, and Number Seven. Um, it's five people. Um, one of the requirements you had be a resident in the city of Prairie View. Uh, did you want to limit, do you wanted to, uh, limit that, or did we want to say a certain amount of the five need to be residents? Because, because what we may have is we'll have a, a vacuum, meaning the technical expertise, you may want out, some outside people. Um, so out of the five, did you want to say three of the five, or? I, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, this is what you, you have here be a resident of the city of Prairie View, which means all five need to be. And I'm saying, is that the way you want this to be intended? And now would be the opportunity for us to make that correction. And then, number seven, it says be a member or past member of Waller County Historical Society. What is the significance of that requirement of the five people? Just for information.
So, um, so let me, let me speak to Article, um, two, Councilman Rowland. Um, so, um, in, uh, A, um, the last part of it where it says the mayor is appointed by the city council in accordance with the city charter, who shall whenever possible meet one or more of the following qualifications. So it's not mand- mandatory?
They meet all.
Yeah. It's one or more, not all of them.
That's.
See on that Article Two?
Uh-huh.
Under A, right before it goes into the different qualifications.
So that means that, not, okay.
Yeah, see, it's one or more. I hear what you're saying, because you do, you do need expert, because what we did it in, one of the examples that we had is we did the same thing in our document in Harris County, but what they did was they added four at large, that would do exactly what you're trying to, to allude to, because we have five regions, um, there. So one of the things that's different here is that one, it meet, they meet one or more of it, so it's not necessary that you have to be a resident.
And the reason that came up in discussions was because if we have someone with a particular expertise that we want, if we restrict them, especially where we're restricted with our population being pretty far from the city, relatively small, and that sort of thing, if we have some expertise in, uh, Austin or, or Houston, this would have precluded them for us from being able to tap into that. But based on their expertise, we may say, hey, we want them because they're great for a grant proposal, because of their experience.
I, I agree. I just, my thing is, since this is a Prairie View's historical commission, under the city of the Prairie View, we should make some, usually all our things have some requirements for citizens in our community, and because of the one or more, it may not do that. So you could have all five people not live in the city of Prairie View. And all I'm trying to, as we talk about this, what, you know, um, what can we do, what can we do this to make sure that at least we'll have some balance of citizen representation? Because you could get, because based upon the one or, one or more, you could have all five people not live in the city of Prairie View.
No, we, um, the council's checking balance, the mayor makes the appointment, but it has to come back for ratification. So if someone comes that doesn't have what council feels, like you say, with your concern, well, wait a minute, we've got more people out of the area and we really want more in, or anything like that, but the council's, uh, vote on approval helped with that checking balance. Any other unreadiness, councilman?
I have a question.
Councilman Jones?
You are a part of the executive committee, right?
Executive committee.
Like you are the executive, the executive branch, right?
Well, I would say we all are.
With that being said, you're not a part of the body, so you cannot make a motion.
Excuse me?
The branches of government.
The, the chair is not a part of the body? What you, what you reading that?
It's the branches of government. You're not a part of.
But we're not, we're not broken up like that here.
You, you make executive decisions. We, we set policy.
No, you make decisions about things as well, but, uh, any other readiness on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right?
Aye.
Motion passes. So it's a tie, a vote would pass.
Oh, it's not a tie.
Yes, one and one.
I would like for it to be set on record.
The motion passed.
I would like for it to be set on record.
Call for a record vote.
Call for a record vote.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rowland? I move that we approve establishing African-American Cultural Heritage Commission, ordinance twenty nineteen twelve sixteen zero zero one, in the city of Prairie View, Texas.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. You've heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Item two, discuss and take action to approve erst complaining CPA, P L L C, to do the annual audit. Uh, council, I think we're still finalizing something with Mr. Payne, because he had been here.
Exactly. Yeah, he was out on a minor medical procedure last week and was unable to resume at the time, and I have, uh, thought it was a twenty day, I just, we, 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 we have a minor modification, um, for, for done outside of the audit itself, at a hourly rate, if that happened, that would have to be approved, but we don't have that drafted, so we're too bad.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll pass that over, uh, item two, Ms. Bynum, to the next meeting. Uh, item three, discuss status of building official. The update on that is, we've been finalizing trying to get some salaries, because we need the, uh, the funding in there beyond the temporary measure that the council had voted with Bureau Veritas. Um, and we've been looking at additional postings with other cities, T M L, IND, some things like that, to try to get what to bring forth to council. Yes? Councilman Jones?
Uh, how long have you been working on this process, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, it's been on and off a few months, because council has been bringing Bureau Veritas on and, and that sort of thing, so we've been looking to gather information to bring it. It's come up a few times.
Uh, but.
So just gathering data right now.
But, Mr. Mayor, we've, we've asked for a building official, I think since our budget passed, we passed Bureau Veritas on a temporary basis. Uh, about a month ago, we chose not to continue the contract with Bureau Veritas, because, uh, no representative was coming to the meeting, and, um.
Council didn't vote not to contract to Bureau Veritas, you're still contracted with them.
No, we asked not that they operate as a building official, because you brought back to us on the agenda for us to approve, uh, ninety days for Bureau Veritas to continue to be the building official, and we did not approve or extend their ninety day as a, uh, building official after we approved it for, uh, two months prior to that.
Is that, no?
Yes.
Uh, council, council, can you clarify that? Because I think we extended that contract to sixty or ninety days, am I correct?
Uh, so initially, they had asked that RFP be gone out for us, so that they could at least compare and decide whether or not they were gonna use Bureau Veritas. And what they did is instead of using thirty days, they thought that was too short of a timeframe for the RFP to be completed, and they have other applicants to consider, so they extended it until January, which was a sixty day timeframe, I believe.
Okay, so Bureau Veritas is still our current temporary, and we're just trying to see if we can't change it, and that's the information that we're gathering, to see what others are paying and what duties are performing based on what our needs may be.
And, and is there not, uh?
Have RFPs been sent out already?
No, because you gotta have the data on what you want them to do. Like, right now, our situation, um, I think is recently is six weeks ago, uh, Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Me, you, USW, Trilogy, and Bureau Veritas, Matt, even to take a look at what services were crossing over and things like that. So that was some of the, the information, because now that we have the city engineer and found out their capabilities, what do we need Bureau Veritas to do or not do, or best, better yet, a building official? So it's so much being done in working with, uh, Ms. Cortez and the, the people up front, um, even with planning and zoning and trying to get those things out. We're trying to see, okay, can we get someone that's gonna do the notices every time we've got a request for zoning change or some other thing that P and C does, uh, who's gonna do that? Um, it wasn't a, a Trilogy, USW, or Bureau Veritas thing, but we're trying to couch it under the building official, otherwise we need another individual. So it's, it's kind of a convoluted process, but I welcome any, any councilman who wants to assist with it, but it's, uh, it's about itself.
The fact of the case, I'm just trying to make sure. You're saying that, uh, that y'all were working through trying to decipher what Bureau Veritas does?
Mm-mm. We're trying to decipher all of what we need that we can couch under a building official.
So what?
See, that's a, a broad hat, and that's the concern that we ran into.
So does, because Bureau Veritas is currently the building official, doesn't that current building official have a job description?
They've got a lot, but Bureau Veritas has like a lot of services that they do, and that's why it's like over five thousand a month. But that's what I'm saying, do we need them to do all of that, or does some of it fall under our engineer? We're having to take a look at all that.
Right. Okay, so the five thousand, is that included, is that just the building official, or is that Bureau Veritas in its entirety, in the entirety of the services that we proceeded?
That's, that's in, no, it's not the entirety, because they build separately as a pass-through whenever someone does a thing. But for example, when we look at Bureau Veritas and all of their licenses that they have, it's difficult, uh, Ms. Underwood, correct me if I'm wrong, with all the licenses that they have, because they do so much as one of the biggest, you know, building inspection companies, they're able to do a lot of things, but if we bring someone in with most of those licenses, can we afford them?
Yep.
See, that's, again, we're, we're measuring that, but again, we're, we're open for help and input and taking a look at it, because until you're up in there seeing all the different things that need to be done, that Bureau Veritas can do, that weren't remembered, a lot of these things were, you know, somewhat haphazard before, and we're trying to do them right. Yes, sir. Councilman Jones?
Uh, Councilman Randall, to your point, you could add additional five thousand dollars a month to Bureau Veritas to be our building official, besides all the things that they do outside of that.
Mm-hmm.
And so, do you have a timetable on, on?
We're hoping to finalize at least the posting, um, the next few weeks or early next year, but, uh, again, what we post.
Their contract is up in January, if you understand, right? So there's, so there's gonna be a last time they're gonna do a building official.
Why wouldn't we just extend it until, well, so.
Well, it would have to come back for another, for another extension. But if we keep, if we're just gonna keep extending it?
Would we rather have it come back instead of saying, uh, ninety or hundred and twenty days?
Right, right. We would rather have it processed.
To where we get a process to where we get our own building official.
We get it, but right now, it is important in comparative that.
Well, because we're not talking about extending. We're just talking about where we are as a process, and we're saying that the current extension is over, uh, beginning of January, so either in that meeting in January, we're gonna have to come back for, for another extension, or, which is probably not gonna be likely, because we're about to be in the holiday season, but we'd like to have been in a place and, and part of the process where we could at least have the next step. So even if, even if the extension was, well, now we've actually put the RFP out, or now we've received X amount, now we're gonna, we're gonna face two or three of the process, we need a, well, thirty day extension, we're gonna be extended. Hopefully, we'll be a little bit further down, as we're saying, when we come back in January.
Anything else on three?
No, sir.
Item four, discuss status of the city streets. The, in, in working with, uh, Public Works and, and several folks, we have areas of streets off of Alita, Santa Monica, Joan of Arc, Marie Antoinette, and, uh, just over in the area, right on the other side of Pine Meadows, where we have several, even one right back here behind City Hall, where we have streets that are streets, but they're totally unfinished streets, you know, needing clearing and that sort of thing. The one best. The one best estimate that we have has to do with Marie Antoinette and Joan of Arc, and it actually doesn't stop there, because that's actually a development that was sanctioned by realtors, whomever, but it's listed as a subdivision, and it would be going quite a bit ways past where Marie Antoinette ends now, and then curving over and clearing and what have you, was in the ballpark of, not the ballpark, but it was actually a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That didn't include finishing the street. So what we're looking at is taking a look at seeing if that company will do the clearing there, and clearing in some other areas, so some of our other property owners can have access to their property, because we find ourselves in a scenario where if they're landlocked and we have anything to do with it, because we're not providing streets, then it becomes difficult to give them citations, because we haven't opened up a street that is listed on the map. So if we can get these things cleared, then by next budget cycle, we could be laying more streets, but the one thing that's been, been a, a, a good and a, a challenge is, as we've added water sewer, the folks go past where the water sewer is and ask us to bring it down, which has been, you know, keeping our Public Works guys busy and, and everything, but then now we have new unfinished streets that, um, we're looking at coming back to. So it's been somewhat of a process. Councilman Jones?
So, Mr. Mayor, have you, uh, looked at the idea about putting out a, a possible bid to, to where we contract out, where a developer, a local developer, to develop our city streets?
Yes. We can't afford it. On this one project, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand, we have a hundred and something in that account.
We have, we have over, we have a hundred and fifty, well, oh, a little bit over a hundred and fifty thousand, as well as we have in our reserve about the same amount, uh, of, of those funds, and so, what, what, what is the plan in which it is to move the city forward fixing our streets? But, I mean, you don't have to put out a bid, uh, necessarily to get a contract with a dollar amount, but we can pull out a bid to where we have a contract in which they develop a plan with us, uh, and which we've developed a plan previously, and put that plan into action, and allow us to come back and say, this is the resources in which we need, and this is how we move forward, such as Trilogy, USW does, with our water and our engineer services, just contracting our streets up.
Well, that, that sounds good in theory, but the people that we've talked to that do that, they give you a quote on, you tell them what streets, what area, but to map out something with the city and a plan, these folks aren't doing that for free, they want to. Hold on, who's first? Go ahead, Councilman Roland.
Mayor, uh, two questions.
Yes, sir.
One, uh, we have talked about the street plan, I guess, for some time, like...